Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Call or roll, please.
Call or roll.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Roy Knessky.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Go ahead and rise, come and pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members. Tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public. For the purpose of conducting the school district's business is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I've made a motion to approve the minutes to the September 4th special meeting, September 29th special meeting, October 5th special meeting, and October 14th special meeting minutes. If I can have a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Knessky. Any discussion? If there's any discussion, call or roll, please.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Right.
Roy Knessky.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jen Parker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, full business. Has anybody got anything? How about your business? All right, easy peasy. Takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. Do we not have any special reports tonight?
We're gonna do it during my presentation. I've given an update on COVID and Mr. Graham said he would also participate in that.
Okay, I just realized it was usually there. Okay, sorry. So first up is Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report, the Superintendent's Business Advisory. We had a meeting.
COVID 2016.
Last Thursday?
That's correct.
Right? Last Thursday morning via Zoom, we had a couple of our students on there that had graduated. Just kinda talked about some of their experiences at Riverside and what they were doing now. I hate to jump off, but what other things did we have on?
Well, they were just talking about how we're gonna proceed throughout the year. Again, trying to set up some interactions between our students, giving them opportunity to work out in the field. Get some experiences from our local business owners.
Curriculum and programming and boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay, uh, booster meeting, we haven't had one yet. It's coming up. Curriculum meeting, we met on October 20th. And, um, we discussed the Chromebook update and, uh, still waiting on some that are ordered. Not in yet, been ordered quite a while ago. Talked about conferences and going virtual with those. And, let's see, what else? Teacher in-service, November 3rd. Talked about under data updates, we talked about math testing for K to 3 for reading. That's gonna be coming up shortly. And we're also looking in December at some testing, I think that's for the high school, right?
For the high school.
Yep.
Yes.
So, some testing coming down the road. The math test helps us chart kids, um, as they hopefully grow and develop their skills. And the teachers use that information to find out if we have kids that are falling behind or if we're keeping them up to grade level. It's pretty important. And then curriculum highlights, we talked about, uh, aside projects that, um, juniors and seniors are gonna be involved with leadership and entrepreneurship. And, um, it's a class that's already being offered to those kids and focuses on, um, community service and other types of projects. That's an ongoing thing. And they're reading a book called The Ice House and getting some background that way. And let's see, um, I have something about the Phoenix project, but I didn't really write it. Does that sound familiar? Phoenix?
We did talk about that. I don't know if I was just giving you an update on the program and success. I think we talked a little bit about how some of those students in that program have made some connections and were thinking about career opportunities and we were looking at different ways. Remember, we have different ways to get them to give some experience and kind of growing there now.
I have the word business there, so that's... Okay, that's it. Unless, Tom, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is that after the meeting, Mr. Miley and Dr. Kales and I went down to the welding lab. And so things are, they basically cleaned it out and they're starting to the point where they are ready to start construction. And then they were there, they actually had put the, they were installing the electrical equipment outside. I think it's a semi, oh, you're gonna cover that?
Yeah, there's only three photos there. I don't have any captions or anything else, but, um, but this was last week. So, uh, you can see they're already in the process of tearing down at least the old ceiling that they had up there, which makes it look a lot better. Really didn't cost us a whole heck of a lot to take it down without putting anything up there. And I think the way it looks when it's more industrial form is, fits perfectly for that layout. Hang on, I'm sorry, going the wrong direction again. There's Mr. Hack, Mr. Miley, right after the meeting. They're not freshmen, those are grown men. And, uh, that's the ceiling there and a shot to the back there where the welding booths are. So, everything is moving along pretty well in there. It's amazing how much more room it seems when they take out all the larger, older equipment that was once in there. And, um, they cut a door in the side and it's moving along.
Did you know if that electrical work was completed outside?
Yeah, they were working on it as of, uh, last, end of last week. I'm not sure if they're completed yet or not. I know they were trenching something over that way. They haven't been down there since we went down, but I'll check in on it again. You know, I don't know if it's gonna look any different. I'm hoping it does, but we'll see.
We're getting new equipment in that, in that room, I understand. Like, what are they doing with the, like, the old, the lathe and the?
Uh, they're getting rid of a couple of the machines and they're keeping a few as well. They're keeping the plasma table and that old large, they keep one lathe and then there was a larger machine. I'm not even really sure what it does. But most of it is out, some of the larger equipment that has been in there for a while.
What are we doing with it?
I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds like it's scrapped.
Yeah, I think they were talking about scrapping some of it, because I don't know that it's even machinery that anybody wants that. Do you know what I mean? I think it's been around, but I know Brian, around that long. I know Brian Gruber was looking into that and Scott Light was reaching out to some of his contacts to see if there was anybody who even wanted it. And if not, I think they will get it scrapped.
One of them needed a major repair as well, from what I understand. One of the machines we're getting rid of.
I think there's something that Jack had mentioned in regard to math testing. How are we doing things like that with our remote students?
So, we did test our remote students. Map, we're able to test them remotely. And that actually is a really good question, because we cannot state test students remotely. So there is a big difference and that was a little bit of a shock to parents and probably maybe a bit of a lack of communication on our part. Sometimes we get stuck in our own heads and we think everybody knows what we know, okay? So, map testing is something that we decide to do as a district and we contract with a company to do that. And the company was able to, to arrange it so that that testing was able to be done remotely. However, so we gave it to all the kids, just like we normally would, whether they were remote or in person. However, we discovered some discrepancies in some of our remote scores. I also think it's hard as a parent, if you are home and you see your students struggling, to not want to help them. But that's the whole point of the test, is for us to understand where they are struggling. So, we're not using the, we're using those scores, but we're also placing them as they come into us. I guess in the context where they were taken. So, we do have that information. Actually, we're gonna take a look at the next curriculum meeting in December at where we are at the beginning of this year as compared to years past. Just as a team to kinda look at, is there a huge difference from the fact that our students, you know, effectively were not getting in-person instruction for the last nine weeks of last year? So, we're gonna take a look at that and see. But I will say, third grade parents already know this, high school parents will become aware of this shortly. The state has not taken away the mandate for us to do state testing and that has to be done in person. There is no accommodation for remote learners. So, for the third grade test, we did our in-person kids like we would normally do. They did two sessions. We are next week running two sessions for remote learners. Parents have to bring them into school, because it has to be proctored by our employee with a teacher's license, okay? The same thing will happen in December, when we do our first round of state testing for high school students. So, anybody who needs a makeup, anybody who is in a government class, we do test some of our English students who are taking CCP, because they're technically ending a course at the semester, will be tested either here, like we normally do, or we'll have to make accommodations for remote testing. We are trying not to bring them into the building to be respectful of parents' decisions, to keep their students home. So, we're going to, it'll be something, maybe, maybe we'll do it at the field house, maybe we'll do it after school. We don't know exactly how it's gonna work, but it's gonna be something that's outside of, excuse me, the normal school day. So, that is coming. Hopefully sooner rather than later, so people can prepare.
Thank you.
All right, anything else under curriculum and programming? All right, that takes us next to finance and audit and legislative, Mrs. Grassi. So, finance and audit, we have not had a meeting. However, we are gonna have to have one in November, so we should probably schedule that. I don't know if we wanna do that now, because we have to review the five-year forecast prior to the November board meeting. Also, at our, at that finance meeting, I know I would like to, like, schedule our meetings for the rest of, for the rest of the school year. I guess that's dependent on people being on the same committees come next year, but...
Yeah, we're gonna schedule for the finance, for the other five-year forecast review. It's almost completed. If you wanna schedule something for next week or the following week. There are November board meetings early on the 17th, so it'll come quickly.
That is, that's true. Um, did you wanna do that now? Did you wanna do a morning? Did you wanna do?
Morning through five.
Where it works for you. I can do morning, morning, I just have to find the one that works. Do you wanna schedule this, do you wanna wait and schedule it after? We could just have a conversation on one that might look like it works for our day? Okay, that's fine with me. Just, we're just gonna do that. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. Okay. Uh, Mr. Hack, buildings and grounds and alumni.
So, we did not have a buildings and grounds meeting. Uh, we have a new director of maintenance. Wanted him to get a little bit acclimated, but we'll have one in November and then probably monthly thereafter. But I didn't wanna, you know, overburden him at this point.
One of the things, I think this is a perfect opportunity, he's actually in attendance today.
Sure.
Rich, our Lessick, right here.
My head's already swimming, just keep adding to it.
You hear this in a second, official name, still here. We're happy about that. Actually, he spent some time before the start with Mr. Weiner and last few days, right? With Mr. Weiner walking around and trying to get acclimated to the district. Gone to some of the buildings.
We've seen all the schools for the night staff and then I'm, um, three-quarters of the way through all the day staff for the schools. But I've seen all the properties, including, um, LeBroy and, um, the Concord Maintenance Building.
I didn't want to present about it. Go right ahead. You wanna shoot a little bit back around, you know, where you're from, your experience, real quickly?
I grew up in Euclid, was in the Northeast Ohio all my life. I was, the last 25 years I've spent at the Western Reserve Historical Society University Circle. Most of you will know them as the Crawford Auto Aviation Museum. They have the cars, not the dinosaurs. Everything there that you can think of, from maintenance to housekeeping to janitorial to project management to construction, I was involved in, including security. I was part of the Task Force Roundtable for the RNC Security Forces. I was also involved just recently with the Roundtable Security Forces for the debates. That was rather strenuous considering that we had a lot of intel that said that they were gonna try to do what they did in May to Cleveland. But, um, as I've been telling everybody in my interviews and in the staff that I've been meeting, that my hands have been in the dirt and my boots have been in the ground the entire 25 years. There's nothing I haven't seen, there's nothing I have not done, that nobody, nobody can come and say that they've done it and I didn't, because I have. And I have stories that we won't tell here. But then, you know, the next minute I could be meeting with the board members, I could be meeting with our Buildings and Grounds Department, I could be meeting with the Chief of Police, Homeland Security, or I was sitting on a $10 million renovation project. So, I feel very well-rounded on it and I look forward to this challenge and I thank, thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I'll go.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Here's your real question, question reserved for a second. Did you, did you, I wanted to play the building, the carousel.
Actually, I was on that $5 million building construction and I did erect the carousel when it came on site and I am state certified to run the carousel. And before, and, 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 a very important piece of information in case you ever come across it. There is a difference between a carousel and a merry-go-round. And there are two fractions out there. There is a merry-go-round fraction and there's a carousel fraction. I'm dead serious. And the difference is a carousel has horses only, a merry-go-round will have other animals other than horses.
Honest to Commissioner, I'd ask you to move to the lower right. Well, we'll ask him to review.
He's not sure yet. All right, would we have anything else for buildings and grounds or alumni?
I, I, no.
Excellent, well, welcome, we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to policy and strategic plans, Mrs. Knessky.
We have not had a policy meeting recently, but we will need to put one on the November in the near future. So, I haven't even taken a look at it, so it looks like we need some time to go through this. As far as strategic plan, during our October 14th special meeting and working session, we began talking about approach to that, so that the district can reset our strategic plan. So, there hopefully will be work on that.
We reached out to a couple of companies and we're getting, um, proposals.
Is our plan for the policies to have the policies that we're, that we will be reading on the November agenda as a first read?
Like? If we have it on for a first reading in November, I'm not so sure that we will.
Or are we supposed to be looking at those first?
No, Chuck is, if he hasn't already, he's gonna send you, um, the, not the redacted, it'll be redacted, but you can tell what they, what was taken out.
I think we have a printout.
Okay.
I'm just, like, I'm just trying to figure out, like, timing, I'm like, I shouldn't look at all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's really, you know, I think this work, work I'm going through, we'll have to figure out what makes sense. I mean, some of these policies are, they should bounce sooner, so, you know, some of them are set around for a while and included. So, I guess you just, you know, just try to work through them, we'll get something stable soon. If it's a first reading in December.
All right, just asking, it doesn't look like it's too big of a list. If there is nothing else, bye then. Let's go to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kales.
You know, before we started, I had an update on COVID. I started thinking back to last year and we had a seven-day span that we had so many absences that we started tracking for that seven-day period. And it makes me think that maybe during the month of February, between February 3rd and February 11th, maybe this was the start of the COVID impact on our district. So, I asked Debbie, she put the chart together and I asked her to pull it back up. And I thought it was just interesting, the number of kids that were out during that week. Nothing extremely significant other than the fact that, you know, the significance lies in the fact that we had so many kids out about a month prior to our shutdown. I just thought it was interesting. I don't know if I shared this with the board back in February or not, but we had 191 students out on February 3rd, which was a Monday at the high school. 66 out at Luthon that same day, 91 at Riverview. Considering Riverview has 580, 579 students, that's quite a bit. Park City only had 16, Melbridge 41, and Buck Bay 26, and you can read the rest. As you know, Lake County is now red. Unfortunately, it's red. You know, we've been, I guess I could say we've been enjoying the fact that we haven't been red and we've been bouncing back and forth between yellow and orange. We were kinda concerned about this happening in the beginning of the school year, while we're preparing for the beginning of the school year. In our reopening guide, we were trying to decide whether or not we determine our closures on the color codes. And that was pretty much what all the districts were thinking of doing during that time period. And, good thing we didn't. And it seems like most of the schools got off that notion that they would tie closures related to color. Now, if someone would have asked me back in August, that we would have made it this far, I would have thought they were crazy. I didn't think we'd make it this far. I mean, we had discussion in the beginning of the year with other area superintendents, especially in the Western Reserve Conference, as to whether or not we should even have a season. And I'm not gonna get into the details of that discussion, but I have to tell you that I tried very hard to try to bring some normalcy to not only our kids, but everyone in the WRC, because not everyone was on the same board. The league was basically split as to whether or not we should have a season. My idea of this was, you know, let's at least try. I mean, that's why we owe that to the kids. Let's at least try. If things get real bad, then we shut it down. Now, we're looking at it, you know, sports teams have done real well with their season. For the most part, we're following the protocols. If we don't, if we see the protocols not being followed, we get a call from the health department or we correct it ourselves. So, like I said, if someone had said to us earlier in the year, you have eight football games with a potential of two more if we wanted to, but we're not. That's another story in itself. Had a discussion with Mr. Boars, congratulated him on the season and everything else. We still got volleyball going and some of the other sports, but this is the kind of guy Mr. Boars is. He said to me, you know what, we're not gonna do a couple more games, we don't want anyone to get hurt. And he goes, you know what, think about how fortunate we are to have gotten this far. Now it's the winter sports turn and they're the priority. And I think that's something to be said for that, that people were worried that, you know, in a lot of other districts, is once you get through the fall season, you know, people are gonna be a little bit more lax into whether or not we're gonna have a season. And that doesn't bode very well for kids who play winter sports. So, we wanna do everything we can, again, to keep it going, keep that momentum going and do what we can to provide a good season for our, for our kids and have that opportunity. There's so many other things that have been taken away from them, that at least let's try to give them some normalcy in some of their activities as well. So, I've asked Commissioner Ron Graham here today. He's gonna talk a little bit about the first slide. We've had discussion about it and I was trying to understand all the different indicators that are needed to get a certain level of, of color. And I thought it might be better that he come. He invited himself and I thought that was very gracious of him to, I didn't ask him, he offered. And I thought, I'm gonna jump at that opportunity. And he's here today to talk a little bit about the first slide and maybe facilitate some discussion as it relates to our school district.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, go fast if you don't mind. You know, the two jobs you don't want right now are Superintendent's and Health Commissioner, because you're deciding everything and it's very tough. And so, the board is part of that. I just wanted to come today to let everybody know, we're here to support you guys. We're here to make sure that we work together. And back when I met Jim and Nick, I wanna just applaud them for their open, openness, their courage, their calm demeanor during these meetings, because we are deciding the fate of a lot of individuals as far as their education and their success. So, one, I just wanted to be here to explain some of the indicators, that we will oscillate back between orange and red, I think, for a while. And there's some concern, you know, as we move ahead with cases in the hospital, we could go to purple. And certainly there's some game changers. We have learned a lot since what we thought was going to look like in the summer. We do know now that we can control the spread pretty well in schools and to not a shot in the dark like it was back in, back in August. So, one of the indicators we do track are new cases per capita. And that one's basically set at 50 cases per 100,000. As you can see, we were, on the sheet case per county, I can leave this for you guys. We went from 59 per 100,000 to 68 and then now we're at 111. And this data is relatively old, it's about, lags by about a week. The reason we do cases per 100,000 is because it equalizes our risk against other counties. I'll give you some perspective on that, between the week of August 7th and, or, I'm sorry, October 7th and October 20th, Putnam County had 549 per 100,000. So, when you look at our 30, our 60, our hundreds, it's certainly concerning, it's exponential. But these counties are moving just as quickly as us. So, we're still in the, in the top mark with that one. The sustained increases of new cases, that is a trend of six consecutive days in over the last three weeks. So, again, we're using data that is relatively old and we're making decisions on this, but it's the best we could do. Certainly, Ohio was not prepared for this kind of pandemic. Certainly, the data systems were not prepared and it's all unprecedented, you know, territory for us. So, we often do the sustained cases, so you're just looking for, you know, five, 15, 20, whatever that increase is. If it dips down and they go into the averages, so those ones are very hard to calculate. We normally self-calculate the information now after the first couple of months of running blind. We get the advanced knowledge of what the data looks like and we can kinda predict this on Tuesday. We validate the numbers on Wednesday and we're notified on Thursday by the Ohio Department of Health if we're going to turn. Proportion of cases in congregant setting, so that's, that's a measure of community spread. So, if we see that the community numbers are higher than the aggregate congregant studies, which are bigger kind of cap of populations, we get triggered on that one. That indicator unfortunately is kind of mixed up and backwards. So, let me explain, so if you, your congregant settings are very high-risk individuals, if they get COVID-19, they're gonna be hospitalized, potentially pass away with symptoms. So, if you protect your congregant sites, your numbers as community will go higher. And we know that community spread is here, so it's the new news to us. But you almost always get flagged for that one in the criteria. Uh, the next two are outpatient indicators and hospital admissions. So typically, we trigger five in those of people, because they're having five days of consecutive visits. So, as you see people come in for symptoms, those, those ones are what we want, that they're recognizing the disease early on, they're recognizing the symptoms early on and seeking medical care, so they do not end up in the hospital. Uh, so that one will count as a prevalence of what we're seeing in the community, that sustained spread. Hospital admissions, we're not really, I don't think we've triggered six since the beginning of the event and that's those admissions into the hospital. Typically, we monitor Lake Health, their numbers have been anywhere from three between the two hospital systems, a tri-point or two buildings. Today, I think they're up to about eight. So, they look around 10 to 12 is the number where they get a little concerned. Intensive care units have not been exceeded as well. You'll see on the foreigners, eight with an asterisk down in 10, those are three levels of measurements the state is anticipating using, but unfortunately, they don't have all the data reported. So, CBS reports still report positives, but not negatives. So, we have a hard time looking at the positivity rate in Lake County. We do know that there's more testing, there's more cases, but we're still exceeding, we're doing more cases, more testing, but not at the same rate as the new cases identified. So, the positivity rate is going down for a while, it was about 3.7%. Now, it's about 6%. That's really, depends on who you test. So, if you're testing those individuals at highest risk, likely positivity rate will be higher. If you do more general population, it'll be lower. And we do know that, you don't use masks all the time as they fall down, apparently, I'm speaking a lot. You know, so as we learn more with the tests, more of the asymptomatic or positivity rate could go down. But again, in Lake County, because of the regents, the testing kits, we're not testing asymptomatic individuals. So, there's a whole, whole large population that we're missing unfortunately. Those convert to county levels and so right now we're at red. Those convert to county levels, and so right now we're at red. But what we really want to do is make sure we go back to, the reason we started this was to not overwhelm hospital capacity, so that the ICUs would be open, CCUs would be open, basically the same thing depending on the age of the hospital, intensive care, critical care. And we want to make sure we have ventilators available, we can do elective surgeries, emergency surgeries. So in that aspect, we're doing very, very well in Lake County and certainly in the region over in Cleveland Clinic, UH Metro, those areas. As far as schools, we're just not seeing the spread in the schools at this time. It could certainly change on the dime. But it's very, very, very good to see that we're not having a lot of those exposures. You see in the media, we had trunk or treat, that was a very large event. Out of that, we've only had two positives that we've identified, and that event probably had thirteen hundred people in it, and unfortunately, maybe the highest mask use as we wanted. So the fact that these kids are coming to school for the amount of time they are, and not having a large community spread, is a huge benefit to what you guys are doing. Makes us very confident that what you're doing is the right thing. And I just didn't want to answer any questions you may have, as far as the colors or anything else that you want to do.
I thought of going through the rest of the slides and maybe spur a couple more questions.
Yeah, okay.
It relates to the district.
Yeah.
I'd be a misreading this, if I didn't mention that since March, Mr. Graham has been great, great to the school districts, and has been very accessible for any questions we might have. The department is working very hard, especially at the end of the year when we're talking about proms and graduation and a lot of other things. And we've been able to bounce ideas off of the department, particularly Mr. Graham, and we can get a quick response back in how to handle some of the situations that are a little bit more difficult to decide. So. The COVID update, we put your quote in there from the press release, I was wanting, want to make sure that you're still, you still stand by this statement?
Yeah.
The reason why I ask that is, you know, our district hasn't had any identified cases until this past, confirmed cases until this past Friday. We had one, then we had one on Monday yesterday, and then we had one this afternoon, so right now we have three cases. For every three that are out there, there's probably many more that at this point we don't know about. But it's a situation where if we're aware of it, if a parent tells us, we call the health department, and the health department does their investigation and try to determine, you know, the contact tracing, who the person was around, who might have to quarantine, they do some investigative work. It's a lot of work that's involved, and this is just talking about one student here, and instead of, you know, just everybody else in the county as well. And they do the same thing. If they know that there is a person in our district that was confirmed, they'll let us know as well. So that communication goes back and forth constantly. We have Heidi Perry, our nurse, involved very much with it, as our liaison. We also have Nick Carabine and also Chuck keeping track. Now Nick is the guy who puts together the notices that go out, because if there is a confirmed case, we send notice out to all the kids that were in, excuse me, the same classes as that student. Now, some other districts do it by grade level. For us, we thought it was more important by class, because even at the high school, you have multiple grades in one class in certain circumstances. So what we do is we contact all the parents and let them know, we don't identify the student because of HIPAA, but we let them know that they could have been exposed and to keep an eye out for any symptoms that might arise in their children.
So if I could, just to make sure I understand, so when, you know, we all watched the news in, you know, December into January and February, and we had the, you know, things happening in the March timeframe. The whole focus at that point was, you know, lowering the curve and not overwhelming our hospitals. And really, cases was not a part of that equation. And then we clearly, you know, except for a few hotspots in America, you know, it just was not an issue. The hospitals were not impacted from a coronavirus perspective. So I certainly get that cases is important. Just can you explain to me, because right now we have more testing going on. I, you know, and I think all of us are aware to some degree that if you're nineteen and younger, there's really almost no, it's not a surprise that things are, you know, your quote is valid. Based, you know, is consistent with other things that we've heard about, you know, kids that are younger. So can you, from your professional perspective, why, initially, the point was hospitalizations, and now we're focused more on cases, can you help me walk through why that is?
Yeah, so I think the original, I think it was such a push for it because of the novel virus. We didn't know where it would go, how bad it would go, and we seen countries really getting, you know, shut down because of that, an overrun. Luckily, we had enough push, I think we started proactively, you know, to lock everything down. But since that time, I think we just have knocked that curve back and realized that there's, every country's different. And we do have a lot of hospital capacity in northeast Ohio here. If you looked out into southern counties, that's an area where they could become overwhelmed, it is very real for them. So I think some of it, you know, just to look at those pieces and parts of the nation or the state that have, you know, nearest hospital is two counties away. So they've been treating the entire kind of state the way, the way they treat everybody, one size fits all. And so during the process, what's really happened is we've looked at, as from health commissioners and health departments, really fought for local control, to be able to make these decisions slowly over time and with what your community needs versus another community. So I think the general awareness has just become, and compliance, I mean, different countries have different, you know, health behaviors, different population density within their businesses. So, you know, I think we were a little too aggressive at the beginning, but we did knock it down. What kind of collateral damage we caused by shutting down businesses and to parents in homes, it was unfortunate. And so I think it's really just everybody pulled together here in the states that we were just a scenario than the, than some of the other countries.
Because that's, I mean, that's, certainly, we have, we need to be prudent as a society in dealing with diseases that come, because diseases will come. It's part of life, it's unfortunately the situation. But, you know, when you look at the equation, there's two sides, right? We need to mitigate as best we can the disease, but we also need to take into account the negative repercussions, the economic repercussions, the depression, the increase in drug use and things like that. And so, you know, you really, you know, we need to understand where the point is, where the cure has more negative implications than the disease itself.
Yeah, I agree with my notes, when we talk about the cure versus the disease, you know, I think we really haven't handled one, we could have changed it to corollary of assistance damage to individuals.
Well, you know now, asymptomatic, and we can separate it from the high-risk adults, where I think early in the year, in the year of the disease here in those states and other countries, they weren't getting to that separation of those high-risk populations, and so a lot was jeopardized. But here, we've really been able to use what data we can get and look at the community spread and control it. And a lot of it is just about awareness. I mean, if you would have asked me, if we got here with schools still open by now, I would have said like, Jim, I don't think we can. I think we don't be sitting here talking in meetings, you know, with a mask on. I didn't think we'd do that in America, you know, it's just different, but really, some of it just changed as far as, I think it's just overall awareness, and we've changed the behavior enough in the population that has been successful. Now, it could always, you know, it could always go the other way as we move back into the holidays, and there's some fear of that, but we've been very proactive with the schools, the businesses, and so the comprehensive response, which I think has helped us really keep the curve down.
That makes sense, and, you know. Every time you get into a car, every time we hop on a plane, every time we do anything, you know, there's obviously a risk of something negative happening. And we didn't know, it was, they called it the novel coronavirus when it came out, now it's not so novel because we understand it more, right? But, you know, in future waves of influenza and other things, you know, we've never shut down the country like this before. We've had, we've had diseases that, you know, strains of influenza that have impacted, you know, a broader spectrum, and in some cases hit young more than old, or maybe that's not the case, but certainly going back to the influenza of nineteen eighteen, it did strike, I don't know if it disproportionately, but it did strike younger people as well.
H one N one was like that back in two thousand and five, two thousand and ten, or one hundred of those were vaccinated, even bigger than the symptoms, it has an immunity base. You know, through their life span, I should say, everyone did not.
So I mean, are we, I mean, is every time that we have another influenza that comes through, are we, I mean, is this our future from your perspective? Or what's, how do we, how do we mitigate without destroying our economy and having those negative implications that I mentioned earlier?
Yeah, what I think, we need to make sure we have a better way to track the data, prove the data, and speak consistently with the data. I mean, those things are all in their infancy stages with the state. You know, how does Ebola, we would have done everything right, but this turned out not to be Ebola. You know, and it's where, you started trying to prevent death and hospital over surge, to now where people want zero tolerance, zero risk, and you know, as much as we'd love to have that, we have to look at how long the event is, how severe the event is, you know, what are the losses? And like you mentioned, you know, I'm getting more concerned certainly about this, and, you know, as the numbers go up, but what else is out there? The overdoses, the suicides, domestic violence, divorces, all those things that disrupt kids at home. You know, three kids sharing one computer or no internet connection, all these other things are really hitting our at-risk populations, and when something they go on for up to two years, you have to kind of change the game, change the narrative. You know, my concern is, is if we go into purple, so these other counties, the indicators towards the end are hospital indicators. And, you know, certainly if Cuyahoga County goes purple, we have western schools that are going to be very concerned and want to shut down. You know, and it's going to be, again, shutting down for a semester, what kind of damage is that to our youth and our family lifestyles? So there's really no good answer. The problem is, I don't know if we can go backwards, right? We don't want to shut down, and at this point, the governor's really put everything in the hands of local government, so what we're trying to plan for is what would we do if we go purple? Because we can't shut down businesses again, but we're going to have to still put some kind of dent in it if it starts creeping up at the hospitals. And there's really some guidance documents out there, nothing new, nothing innovative, so, you know, it's kind of very concerning that we don't have a good plan.
I hear rumor is that they have already, Cuyahoga County may be purple?
Cuyahoga, Hamilton, and Clark County, and there's one other one that's, you know, I wouldn't be surprised in a week or two weeks that may flip on us.
I don't mean to have a monologue with you, but.
That's okay.
Last question I have you, so there, we have learned the word, there are therapeutics. Are, do we, do the, this Lake Hospital, you know, Lake Health system and the clinic and university are in? Do we have the therapeutics that are helping people recover more quickly? Is there an issue? The treatment's always better than it was at the beginning.
Yeah, not really with the, getting specific medication per se, but I think just being aware of the symptoms, getting in there earlier. And, you know, not verified, but it seems to be a bit milder than it was when this first began. And, you know, to explain that would be just a thrown a dart in the dark, you really don't know. But for whatever reason, we are in a much better place with the degree of severity of the cases that we're all seeing. And I think like ninety-six percent of the deaths we've had in Lake County are sixteen above, you know, so unfortunately, what we need to do is protect those older adults. Everything else, I think we can take some liberties with. Again, if you're getting sick and you're recovering with those known kind of complications, we want some herd immunity to be built. We just don't know what that number is, where it gets between natural disease progression and spread versus hospital over surge capacity. You know, so at a hundred percent, we're going to be concerned, but the hospitals are certified up to three hundred percent surge capacity. But to do that surge, you know, you have to stop, you know, optional hip surgeries and shoulder surgeries, those kind of elective surgeries, and that's really kind of where we're at now. We want to be able to keep those things in place for our families. Yep.
We're still asking parents to do health assessment checks before they're sending their children to school. We're asking staff to do it as well, if any of these symptoms show up, we want them to stay home. Like I said earlier, that as of October twenty-seventh, we've had three confirmed cases. Like I said, we had one on Friday, one on Monday, and one late this afternoon. We believe that a lot of our success here at school, at least early on, is the fact that we've been just, we've had the PPEs in place. We have the shields, there are some other districts that have them as well. Pretty adamant about the students using them in the classrooms. It is a hassle to carry them around, and they're not holding up as well as I would have hoped. But the kids have been great, and so has the staff, and they've just, they've been doing what they've been asked to do. And I thought we'd get a little bit more pushback from students that are just getting really fatigued with carrying these really cumbersome things around, but they've been really good. In fact, there's more uses than just having them on the desk, as I received a picture from Mrs. Harden the other day. One rainy morning, there were a lot of kids holding them over their heads. They didn't have an umbrella, but by golly, the shields did people dry, because they're so wild.
American ingenuity.
Yeah, right. And that's probably how they're getting washed as well. This is just a couple pictures of some of the PPE events going on in there. Other area schools, with our latest discussion at our weekly meeting, most of them are staying the course even though we're at level red. Again, if you were to ask me early on in this, in this school year, or even in the summer before, a few months, a month before the start of the school year, a lot of school districts are basing their decision to have a closure on the colors, we were thinking about it as well. And like I said, we reopened the guide, we say we may. Well, now that we're red, we want to take the other things in consideration, like where the spike is, if it's not happening in the school, we want to be able to have our students still, you know, come to school. Early on, again, we weren't interested in the hybrid, because we believe that a hybrid, now I don't know if you know anything about this, but, you know, we were looking at the hybrid is when students are not in school, either they're home with some other person from the outside coming in and watching kids, babysitting them while parents are, they need to work, or they're at some type of daycare outside of the home, which might cause more spread. So that's one of the reasons why we decided early on as a board is that we're either in or out.
Yes, it's challenging, so I think, ingenuity, and children are much more flexible than we are as adults, so the environment's very different for them. I don't know, I try to apply it, I don't admit it, and Jim is born, but also English, they come in every day, and it's scary, you have kids at home, or maybe they're babying. So it takes a lot of effort to stand up, and then, you know, very well, keep them safe as we can as well. But the reality of this is when their classroom is a pretty darn good, controlled environment, and they go along with it on the airwaves, or in the backyard, that's where we're seeing the spread, small parties, extended family gatherings, where it's Uncle Joe, or it's Uncle Bobby, or whatever, and you let your guard down, and you quit washing your hands, you know, so until that changes, we want to keep our schools in play. And the thing I think we underestimated was the, I think, confidence of at least half the parents to say, we think our children are safe at school, we want them to go in person. When that really shifted, it's all of us to be much more supportive, and red, that initially you thought, you know. So we just have to be adaptive, data changes literally by the hour, if not certainly by the day. And so it's very confusing, you know, to navigate this, but again, we need these changes, we need to be flexible. You know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, trying to keep businesses usual, normalcy as usual, and not overreact. There may come a time where we have to, you know, act quickly and harshly maybe, but right now it's not that time.
So if I could just do a little, we may follow the color code. If we're in a situation where Lake County goes purple, but the outbreaks are not localized to Riverside or other school districts, and we would like to stay open, is that, I mean, I don't know if this is a fair question to ask, but I mean, if we wanted to stay open in that environment, is that something that is going to cause a problem from a health district perspective?
Not that, no. So most of the schools right now want to close them purple, and is the environment of the parents and then the cases speak to them, they're able to stay over hybrid. I think we would certainly promote that, I don't see that as a problem. Unless there would be severe disease spread, we run out of business of closing people down or restricting rights, unless you need to do it. And I think we need to be cautious with this, shut, coming out of that shutdown from early at the beginning, to repeat any mistakes like that. You know, we really need to trust in people pulling together in the local community. So again, I think that would be an option, but it's one of those options, you don't know till you get there, that you can do what you need to do. Because right now, the thought is, almost every school would want to shut down immediately, or at least it was when we built the plans, so we'd have to see.
It sounds like we can apply the data and look at its effect within Riverside environment, and then use improvements and go up in the decisions.
Correct. Yes. Correct, yes.
Actually, yeah, obviously because COVID is very serious, but you got to think that everyone knows a close talker, right? This is going to be tough on close talkers. I like my space.
They share like in purple, wrestling, he has social distance to wrestling, you know. Long enough that's something we would have to go in order to maybe keep this social bit purple. So we have to trade off these things, risk that we have to break it out, but I think it's possible.
So again, it's a prudence thing, you know.
Yeah, just for reference, Mayfield Schools put out a letter today, the parents talking about the rumor that they may eventually be going purple. And they stated that their plans continue even if they go purple.
That's what they figured, Professor Nella.
And again, that wasn't a settlement when we started the school.
Neither.
And that's what we do today.
Yeah. Back in the summer, parents had to commit to either in-person learning or remote learning for the entire first semester. And next week, we're communicating with parents that if they want to switch their children's learning preference for the second semester, they can do so. Then we'll go out next week and then January nineteenth, we start the new semester. Couple of other things too, I wanted to, I mentioned this to the board at the last meeting, this is totally unrelated to COVID. But I told you about the fencing that we put up in the mezzanine area of the field house, so we don't have any accidents. That's a picture of it, that's the other side of it there. What the kids used to do is sit on the edge there and you can see how far that drop would be. So we put up that fence, they did a really nice job, the company that put it up, it's probably been what I thought it would look like. I was really concerned about, you know, I wanted it obviously to protect kids, but there was no really easy way to hook it up. And they did, they hooked it from the bottom to the top. And then like I said, pictures of the home. Make a brief one report.
All right, that takes us to the trailer before we go to black code.
Okay, just have a few updates for the board. Zero reference compensation, over the past couple of years, they did a lot of rebates lately. They did one back in May because of the pandemic going on, they refunded our two thousand eighteen premiums, that was two hundred and thirty thousand received back in May. While the EWC board approved a rebate for the two thousand nineteen premiums, and we should be getting that check within the next week or two. So we're receiving back one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars from that rebate. So that'll help offset some of our state funding cuts. If you remember back in May, the governor cut our budget by just over a million dollars and we got some money back from House Bill one sixty-four for that loss, around nine hundred and some thousand. They carried that funding cut into this year as well. They haven't made any final decisions on that, so, but they also said it probably won't be more than that. But there could be an opportunity that they might backtrack that cut a little bit, but you know, right now we're kind of staying the course as far as the similar cut from last fiscal year is going to stay true for this year as well. Discovery Tours update, remember back, I think it was back in two thousand eighteen now, our Chicago trip was canceled. Joseph Chippaletti, who's the vice president of Discovery Tours, he was indicted on eighteen charges, including wire fraud, eight counts of money laundering, eight counts of bank fraud and making false statements under oath. He's been charged with embezzling six hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars from Discovery Tours. And he goes on trial in December, so we're monitoring that. And Discovery Tours obviously filed bankruptcy as well, so that's in the bankruptcy court as well. So who knows how long it'll take for all this to sort out and then maybe at some point we'll get a few dollars back from that trip, but we're not really sure at this point. Also monitoring, House Bill three oh five, remember it was the Cup Patterson Fair School Funding Plan that would change the way the state does school funding. My understanding is a new substitute bill that's been rumored to be coming out probably right after the election during what's called the lame duck season. People are hopeful that that might actually get approved into law in November, December, or during the next buying budget because that process starts after the first year. So that should be introduced soon. It was supposed to be introduced a week or two ago and then they pulled the press conference at the last minute and for some reason deferred it for a few weeks. So we'll kind of monitoring what that goes. It completely changed the ways schools are funded, be based more on headcount as opposed to, currently it's based on ADM, so it's a number of students that live in your community. Then they deduct things for charter schools and open enrollment and, you know, special ed, like John Peterson scholarships, things like that gets deducted out with a new formula, changes the whole calculation. You don't have these deductions, so it's not, here's what you allocate and they're going to deduct from it, it's more straight funding. These are the students you're actually educating, you're building and they'll be funded based on that. Did you know projections that come out yet for the new, they made some tweaks from when it was introduced a couple of years ago? And so we're just going to monitor that and see how that goes.
Sure, sorry to interrupt, but with regard to House Bill three oh five, that just affects the funding that comes from Columbus? Or does it also have an impact on the local money that's raised through levies and such?
It would just affect the state funding that comes from the state. One of the tricky things is I think that the new formula would actually base funding on the cost to educate a child. Seems like a real basic concept. Our current formula does not do that. It's six thousand twenty dollars and why is it six thousand twenty dollars? Well, this is six thousand, a couple of years ago, it's fifty-nine hundred years before that, it's fifty-eight hundred years before that. It was kind of a, kind of a pullback here. Yeah, yeah. So the new formula is kind of, they calculate basically what's the cost to educate a child? Then there's some type of formula, which that's the details that keep changing. It's based on how your capacity, based on property tax, wealth and income levels of the community, of what portion of that cost to educate a child the state's going to pay, if that makes any sense. So we'll see how that works out when that comes through and you know, hopefully if, you know, under the previous simulations they provided previously, you know, showed a funding increase for us. I'm not sure if that's going to be the case when they finally roll out this new plan. But if anything is to be more understandable, you know, we can actually explain where these figures come from and actually have a method to it that we can build upon. It's never going to have a perfect formula, but at least you can say, okay, here's the formula, now you can advocate for, we want more technology funding, we want more funding for something else. But under the current formula, it's just kind of a complicated math formula to a certain number that really doesn't relate to anything.
That's not necessarily tied to reality.
Yeah. So, you know, hopefully that'll come out soon, hopefully it'll be of benefit to us and actually be funded based on who we're actually educating and not get into these inequities of more money being deducted that is flowing through us and things like that. So it's kind of, it's exciting to see that, but you know, we've seen many attempts over the last twenty years to change it. And we're still, you know, down this path where we're at today. And the other thing is too, is one of the challenges as well is they need to do like a six-year phase in of the formula at this point because of the cost of it. And which kind of maybe shows how underfunded education's been. But the state buying budget, they can only lock in for two years. So they can't really lock in a six-year plan per se, but it kind of sets the course of, you know, a six-year plan. But they could obviously change directions after two years. Just a little, we're still working on our fiscal year two thousand twenty financial statements, our GAAP conversion is called. And the state auditors have started their audit, doing all their compliance audit, while we work on finalizing those financial reports. And we're also going through our annual Medicaid audit. It's a agreed upon period audit, this kind of goes through, it's not like the state audit we had two years ago, this is more of an annual thing that they do. More of a simplified audit, so a couple of audits going on at the same time, a lot of stuff going on with five-year forecast. We also have our state software conversion going live in three weeks as well, so we're very busy in my office. Quick update on classroom fees, the administration's going to meet tomorrow, discuss the classroom fees that are charged to our students based on grade level. In particular, focus on online learning and what's the appropriate charge for that, if any. We're going to be with Dan McIntyre tomorrow to kind of discuss that and then we'll probably have a subsequent discussion with the finance committee with an update to the board sometime in the near future. And lastly, just wanted to give an update, last month, unfortunately I wasn't able to be here. Moody's Investor Services did an update of, they're doing annual updates, it's BHR bonds and got an on rating. And I wanted to highlight a few things from this report. This is a few quotes from this, it says, "With regard to the coronavirus outbreak as a social risk under the environmental, social and governance framework, given the substantial implications for public health and safety in the economy, we do not see any material immediate credit risk for Riverside." So we've been working towards a stronger financial position over the past few years and they've recognized that, but they're hesitant to give any type of upgrade at this time just because of the unknown future economic implications of the coronavirus. Does say that, you know, Riverside has a solid credit position. On the other hand, it's A-one lately, like A-one rating is slightly lower than the US school district median average of double A-three. Double A-three is a higher rating. It said that credit risk factors include, we have a very healthy financial position, strong wealth and income profile, sizable tax base, mid-range debt burden and inflated pension liability, which they always, they throw out every school district report. It also said that our financial position is very healthy and it's a strength relative to an A-one rating. Said the cash balance as a percentage of operating revenues is higher and stronger than the US median. It grew significantly between two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen. It also says that our fund balances as a percent of operating revenues is slightly higher than other Moody's rating districts nationwide. But then at the same time, they, you know, say overall our debt and pension liabilities of district are somewhat elevated and that's slightly weak. And then basically said that, you know, our debt grew significantly from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. And, you know, I didn't want to call them and say, well, yeah, because we went and issued bonds to build on the elementary schools and that's the only reason we got the Moody's rating was to issue those bonds. So it was kind of, I thought that was a little bit interesting comment. So it seems like, you know, we've been working hard to get in a stronger financial position. Been talking to Mike Friselli, believes that we'd be eligible for upgrades based on just the overall climate right now, they're going to hold back on that.
So we didn't decrease.
We didn't decrease.
And we haven't decreased since we got the initial bond rating in two thousand sixteen.
Right, we've had A-one since it was issued.
Since then, which was our initial bond rating, I think we didn't have one.
Yes, we had to get a bond rating to issue bonds in two thousand sixteen.
So I would assume that if we're going to go at any point in time in the near future for, you know, additional funding for high school, if we ever decide to go that route, we would probably ask for consideration from them to review that again for our.
Right, because I think back in, if you remember in December of two thousand nineteen, we did a refunding of our bonds, which is refinancing, saving on interest rates. And, you know, we went in for an upgrade, but the Lake High School Finance District had failed in November, which kind of negated the chance of the upgrade and subsequently passed in the March slash April election, whatever week, we called that back. It happened in March, April. And so if we were, you know, had that passed in November, we might have gotten an upgrade in December, we did refunding. But when we, you know, we decided to move forward phase two, it's possible for an upgrade, but they might hold us back because we're thinking about issuing more of that. So it's kind of a double edged sword.
With regard to, so next month is five-year forecast month.
Yes.
And so with the cuts we took this year and the cuts going into next year, has that, you know, obviously that's still terriers to the five-year forecast. Do you have any initial, I'm sure you're taking some preliminary looks, any commentary at this point before we actually see the real, the real five-year forecast?
I would say it's not as, it's not as bad as you would think, given the two state funding cuts. And a couple of reasons for that is, you know, we did have a health insurance premium holiday in June. So that saved us around five hundred thousand dollars in health insurance premiums. The two verb compensation rebates, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Obviously, between those, just those two items there, you know, helped us offset a lot of that loss. And then, you know, and just from the order of school closure, you know, we had the MOE with, we are in the spring supplementals, we didn't pay those in full. And then we saved on overtime expense because people weren't working overtime during the closure. And, you know, some of the, some of the things that we didn't have to pay, like for some of the security services that we had. We had got some money back from, from the, our insurance company as far as.
Sounds like you've already started looking, haven't you?
So, yeah, yeah. So there's a lot of things that happened that helped negate some of that. So it's more of this current fiscal that we're in, you know, we're kind of running out of things to help offset that loss. But we do have the CARES funding as well, which I forgot to mention, because we received one hundred and thirty-six thousand or so through the CARES, what's called the ESER funds, it's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. And we're utilizing that for teacher salaries that are, for the teachers that are teaching remotely, we apply salaries to those, to that grant. So that's going to help, you know, subsidize the general fund basically by doing that and that's allowed for those grant regulations. But then there's also the coronavirus relief fund that we have, which is about two hundred and twelve thousand. And that's what paid for the hand sanitizer stands, dust shields, all the sanitizer, masks and gloves, leaders, electric stack sprayers. So those didn't hit the general fund as well, they would have hit those grants. So a lot of, a lot of moving pieces to it, there's probably much more that I haven't even really considered. And it's kind of, that's going to help us get through, you know, these next, this current fiscal year. And then, you know, starting in January, February, when the state buying budget starts ramping up and then we'll kind of figure out, you know, what next year might look like. Hopefully, you know, our consultants kind of say that they think that funding will resume in the following fiscal year back to what it was in two thousand. Because we were nineteen, because we're twenty and twenty-one right now. So they're thinking that next year we'll go back up to what we were getting before, but until we know that, it's hard to really predict that. You know, there's hope that maybe at some point they'll maybe use some of the rainy day fund to kind of help ensure that we're not continuously being cut going forward. Obviously that's, you know, there's a lot that goes into that decision as well.
I think one of the things that's going to be really, really important when we talk about the five-year forecast, especially in the finance meeting is maybe instead of focusing on like the usual report that we give to the board and whatever, maybe we start talking about some of the assumptions that are underlying in that forecast. Because I think the sustainability of those extra dollars that are coming into the district for things like workers' comp, those won't be there because they've already given that money back and, you know, the CARES funding and all those kinds of dollars that are coming from the federal government. I'm not exactly sure those are going to be sustainable, like types of dollars that could flow into the district. So maybe talking about some of those assumptions that we're making that underlie what we're putting out there in the five-year forecast is going to be really important for us to understand what those assumptions are and what those really mean for us long-term.
And then there's, you know, how long is this going to continue will make a big difference and who would have, you know, like I always said back in, you know, I did in November two thousand nineteen, if I would have told you in November that the school was going to close, all these, we lost, we lose a million dollars in funding by the May forecast, people would look at me like I'm nuts. So, you know, so it's, you know, we'll continue to update it and kind of monitor that. And just hope that additional stimulus packages will eventually get through, that'll help us out. And, you know, as, take it, do what we can, control what we can control and hope for the best, but there's also planning for the worst. You know, how we, you know, staffing could change just in January with, you know, if there's a big shift from revolt instructions in person or vice versa, will that change staffing needs, you know, as well, we need to increase staffing, we have extra staff at that point. And then how do we manage that, you know, it's going to be.
Right, and some of the things that I think is going to be important to talk about, like as far as, like I say, underlying assumptions. If this continues, we'll have to be looking at things like, do we keep the extra teachers that we hired to be in school? Because, you know, it's those kinds of decisions that we're going to have to be making as part of this forecast to figure out like, what is that really going to look like on a going forward basis? Twenty twenty's been an interesting year, we've lost a lot, but we gained a lot in additional funds from other places that I just don't see happening in two thousand twenty-one, so it'll be interesting.
Right, fingers crossed.
And, you know, we built. And, you know, I, you know, we've built a good financial position, so, you know, it looks like we might start deficit spending next year or the following year, and, you know, so it's not like there's an immediate need to put a levy on the ballot or go back to the voters or anything anytime soon. I think we have a couple of years, you know, as long as things don't get too crazy, I think we'll be fine. But, you know, we'll just continue to, you know, monitor the situation, we'll do our November forecast, we'll update in May, and then, you know, we'll just keep moving along with that. And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves, and their topic comments are limited to three minutes. That takes us to a consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first thing up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through F. Can I discuss a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I would like two things. Well, as far as discussion, I just want to thank people for the donations. So we had an anonymous donation to Melrose, Mel Ridge Office Activity Fund, and we also had a donation of a Pentax camera and lens for the Riverside High School from Andrea and Diane Dominic. And there was a question on IUC, I think if that really is January twenty twenty-two to December twenty twenty-three, or is that supposed to be twenty-one?
No, it is twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-two, because they have to go for bid, correct?
We go through the House School Council, they, they do all the.
They go to bid.
And they do a lot of stuff here. We're under contract through twenty twenty-one, and we actually are locking in a lower rate than we're paying now for twenty-two and twenty-three.
If there's no other discussion on those items, can we call the roll?
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Degrassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through I.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So any discussion on any of these items? If not, Mr. Petco, can we call the roll?
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Degrassi.
Aye.
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then we also have a motion to approve item K, the athletic supplemental contracts. Can I have second on that?
Second.
Thank you. These are the winter supplemental contracts. If there's no discussion on that, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
I'm staying.
Linda Degrassi.
Aye.
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to a Board of Education update. Anyone got anything? Nope. Okay. If there's nothing else, our next meeting will be on November seventeenth at seven PM here in the lecture hall. With that then, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight sixteen PM. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Hatt.
There's too much to leave.
I know, my goodness, no one wants to leave. Okay. Hold on, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Degrassi.
Aye.
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.